So our first item is Oscar and Tanya Allen. Want to come sign in? Okay, do you want to state your name, address?
My name is Oscar Elaine. I live in Four Lisa Lane. I am here to request a variance of six feet. We need a garage. We're facing a hardship due to where the current septic, the reserves and the leasing fields are. The place, the area of the map where we are proposing to put the garage is the only place where we can put a garage. And that's unfortunate really, we're the only area. So that's what we're requesting a variance for, six feet.
Do you have any?
Yeah, I guess I'm not understanding the drawing.
Yes.
Where's the existing house?
Would you like an approach?
Yeah, please. Well, I got that, but where, does it end? Here or here? Thank you. So obviously, here's the house.
Yes, sir.
So wait. The house, I can't quite figure.
So this, the house is, this is Lisa Lane, this is Pease Road.
Okay.
The house is facing Lisa.
Okay.
The driveway, here's a driver right here.
Okay.
You know, yes, yes, exactly, I'm sorry. The driveway.
You're upside down, the driveway's right here?
Yes. Yes, it is the asphalt driveway, that's correct.
Okay.
And the septic is right over here, right? And then this is where the leasing fields are and this is where the reserves are. So we aren't able to use this side.
All right, so but where are the boundaries of the house, of the existing house?
Right here.
Here?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, okay. And so what is between here and here?
Right over here is just some steps. And then a small area where it would be part of the leasing driveway.
So it looks as though the garage is detached from the house?
That is correct.
By how many feet? What's this distance here?
I think it's two feet and eight inches. If I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong.
That's only, I guess it's not drawing the scale. Because if this is 22 feet, this can't be two feet.
Okay, so.
I know, I don't know if this is scale or not. But I'm just trying to look at it and understand it.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, I should specify. Well, we really need is two feet, eight inches. We're asking for six feet, just to be sure. I am honestly not sure, unsure as to the distance between the garage and the house. But I do know that it was, that we brought it back and forth with the. This is the zone of the house right here.
What's that? Yeah, right. Right, but what I'm trying to get to is this, this, this here is greater than the six feet that's required. So you could, this could be, if this is moved closer to the house, the exact same garage. And then you don't need to come visit us.
Especially if what you're saying is it's, you only really need, what was it, two feet, eight inches? And. So if you move it three feet this way, aren't you then within?
Well, I know over here, we have some bushes and we have some trees and stuff. So maybe this is probably not shown over here. But this is just where, but just, I'm not sure exactly if that was.
Not trying to give you a hard time, but in terms of, in terms of granting appeals, or you know, zoning board of appeals to grant a variance, the idea is that they should be rare and there should be some reason. Now, I understand that you can't build it over here, but this distance has got to be greater than two feet. And if there's just a bush here, then this could be moved up above.
You're asking for detached. Did you think about attached? Did the designers here?
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have thought about detached. It's just, the detachment was just the better option, just based on where, where we can put the garage. The kitchen, the dining room is right across from it.
Yeah, that's what I want to ask you. What is opposite the garage? I'm sorry. What is between the house and the garage?
So between the house and the garage is some brushes, some trees.
As far as.
What's over here? Is this windows and stuff?
So it's over here, it's windows. So we have, we have windows, we have a bathroom. We have dining room right here, there's some brushes over here. So that's, this is where.
So if you put the garage right against the house, you'd be kind of blocking a lot of the rooms.
Yes, that's, that's, yeah, that was the rationale behind it, yes.
Right.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No, it's, I think if you moved the garage against the house, you'd be blocking some of the rooms, like the dining room and the bathroom.
That was the point of my question. Why are you proposing detached versus attached? Because then you would be closer to the house.
It's, yeah, it would affect the look of a house, what we're able to see outside and such. Because it's, there's a big window right there in the dining room.
Have you, Terry? Any, has anybody asked any insight into this proposal versus others we've seen over the years?
There has not been that discussion.
You know me, I always ask you.
I understand. The, I'm familiar with the property because you had a sunroom built.
Yes.
A year or two or so ago, I forget.
That's right, yes.
And this property has, is, has the either advantage or disadvantage, depending on your point of view, of having a two-front yard requirement. Because it's on a, on a corner of Lisa Lane and Pease Road, our regulations, as opposed to many other regulations in the state, require two front yards. There are some, many communities that say that you can either pick a front yard and then the other one is a side yard, or some variation of that. But ours is a simple regulation. And when you have a front yard, you have two of them. And some people think it's an advantage because you only have, you have less neighbors if you happen to be, you know, so inclined. Perhaps some more privacy. But in the, you know, there are some people who have come before us to say that the real hardship is having two front yards. So if Lisa Lane was not there and we, this is just a property on Pease Road, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be in front of you. But, and I think that probably speaks more to the hardship than a bush or a septic system.
I'm sorry, the last words you said were?
I think that, you know, the two front yards probably speak to perhaps more of a articulate hardship than, than a septic system or a bush.
Right, but the property was also built in what year?
I believe in 1970.
It's a modern house.
It's a modern house.
Right.
After the building.
Right, it certainly, it certainly isn't like many houses that you've seen here where, you know, it's an ancient house, it's an antique house, it's, you know, it's a, it's a modern house. Is this your only garage or do you presently have a garage?
I do not have a garage. We've been planning to put a garage for quite some time, so this is, our cars have been broken into a couple of times already. Just this morning, just trying to just get to my car and haul myself to the car. It was, was very difficult because it was icy and it was just, you know, if I had a garage, it would be, mobility would be much easier obviously.
So you're presently, and you're in the main house, you presently do not have a garage whatsoever?
I do not.
But this is the only option that came to you based on their analysis?
Well, this was the only option because our purpose would have been to put the garage right next to where the septic is. So we've, we've had to get some plans and hire different people and talk to different people, see what our options were. In case, in case we need to move the reserves and such. And this is probably, this is definitely the most, yeah, the better option, the only option really.
You said, you said moving the reserves is not an option?
It's not an option, no.
It's cost prohibitive or just not an option?
It's, it's as an option.
And the size of the garage is not going to make a difference?
It is the smaller, one of the smaller sized garages for two cars.
Two cars.
If you move, if you move it closer to the house, you'd basically be blocking.
Yes.
Dining room, bathroom, the windows. So that's not a, that's not a reasonable.
Can remodel.
Make the glass wall brush, there you go.
It would, it would change the, the, it would change it, it would have to basically change an entire section of the house.
No, I, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Terry, if they had a one car, would they be within?
Well, you know, if he's asking for a variance of six feet, 5.99 feet.
Right.
And his testimony is that, is that a minimum size two-car garage is 22 by 22 feet. Math would tell us. You know, you know, a, not that this has anything to do with the front yard, but our regulations allow a detached, single, a detached garage, a detached accessory building, to be within 15 feet of the interior prop line. Where you have it, it might be less prominent in your, in your, in the Lisa Lane front yard things if it was moved away from the house and more towards the prop line. It would not affect the front yard or your request. And nor would you need any more permission to do that. But it kind of blocks your, as presently, it kind of blocks your house. Windows, it would seem. Although your house is very high, as I recall, right? It's a, it's kind of like a, almost a story above ground. I mean, these front steps, these front steps that go up, go up a considerable distance, no?
I would say an entire floor, I mean, it's, I, it's probably four steps that go up.
Oh, okay. That's not unusual.
Why don't you sit down?
Oh, thank you. Just waiting to see if there was any more questions.
Can we have this as a discussion for all of us?
Yes, we're just, he's just trying to visualize where the, like, I'm just pulling up Google Earth to just get better visual, so I understand. So for pictures. The garage can end up in front of the house, not to the side of the house. If you're square in front of it, you'll see the graph.
Can you just, is it over there? Any closer to the?
Terry, I have another question. So hypothetically, this is a, it becomes a non-conforming.
So what you're looking at is?
It becomes a non-conforming property, correct? Because now we're, we're, in a sense, changing the regulation on this property in a way.
I think that any variance request makes it non-conforming.
Yeah. But it's not an existing non-conforming property.
It is not.
It conforms to our existing regulations.
Correct.
And by doing this, it's now becoming a non-conforming property, in a way.
Right, by, by variance, yes, by illegitimate.
Is there, is there such thing, is a hardship defined hardship by not having a garage? I mean, has that ever been, you know, litigated or defined in some way? Term hardship?
You know, I think that hardship is a, is a term of art.
Yeah.
And we've seen personal hardships requests here where, you know, where people have a, one person, as I recall, had a, had a hearing problem and he felt that his bedroom had to be in the front of his house and he couldn't be in the back of his house. And, and this board, with some difficulty, did the right thing and turned that thing down. Because you can't have a personal hardship. The hardships, you know, have to run with the land. They do have something to do with the land. And that's why you look for terrain, you look for, you know, septic well combinations that don't, things. We've confronted a lot of garages recently here where, where we were tight to septic tanks. We were close to wetlands, you know, compelling reasons. And then quite frankly, after some discussions, you, you thought of them, asking them to move it and make it smaller and, and they'd come back. So, you know, is there no other spot on this property for, for a garage? I don't know that. I can see where, if he wanted to put it in his other front yard, the one on Pease Road, he's very close, the septic tank is very close to the house. And that while, while his septic system may very well be able to have something built, you know, in between the house and the septic system, he would be moving his septic tank, I'm quite certain. And depending on grades, you know, all that relies on gravity and I, I just don't know how it would work out. And it certainly ratchets up the cost of a garage. I presume this plan that shows a new septic system doesn't, you're not really planning on putting in a new septic system? This is only just a B-100 for purposes of?
That is correct, yes.
Of the, of the health district?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
But to your point, though, were other options proposed to you by your designer?
The, so I think the only other option that was suggested was doing some in the backyard, but that would just change the landscape of, of the backyard of, that we would have to cut down. It would just be so, it would become cost prohibitive at that point because of how many trees we would have to cut down and, and basically where, how we would have to just change the entire landscape of the backyard. So in my opinion, that wasn't even an option because, I mean, we have a, well, a swing set back there for my kids, we have a bunch of stuff there for the kids and trampolines, so it's just.
Did you consider the one car?
I did, we did. I, my car's broken into, her car has been broken into. I don't want to, I would like to avoid that happening in the future if I can.
Yeah, who's in the doghouse that night?
It was me, I forgot to lock the car both times.
No, no.
So Terry, if I understood what you were saying before, that if this, since this is a freestanding structure, it could be moved closer to this boundary here?
That's correct, 15 feet.
So instead of, this could be moved 10 feet over and still be okay?
Correct.
Okay.
Without a variance.
No, that's right, without a variance, okay.
Right.
So the boundary you're describing?
I just wanted, I'll bring it over and I'll show you. Moving it to the left. Yes, it could, it could be moved this, this direction by 10 feet without, without having to visit with us. Because as Terry said, as a freestanding building, you only need a 15-foot?
Side yard.
Side yard, so here's the side yard. This, this could be moved by 10 feet. This garage is only 22 feet, so it would be literally half the distance. So, you know, and then if it's that, and then you move.
Right. Well, keep in mind too that there's a well there though.
There's a well.
The, the well is, is in, I mean, I can't see exactly where you're drawing it, but.
I'll bring it to you, still there.
It would be no closer to the well.
Where's the well? I'm going to find out. I see the test pit.
Here's the boundary. So I was saying, if you move this building here, 10 feet closer to this boundary, this doesn't require zoning board of appeals.
Okay, I'm sorry, Lisa Lane, okay, good. So we're moving it back?
Yeah. Because Terry said this distance only needs to be 15 feet. So here's 10 feet. Now this thing is only croaching on the house by 10 feet. And then if they can be moved back by three feet, then you don't have to visit us.
Okay, so a little bit, okay.
So then the problem is solved, so you don't have to come and visit us.
Okay. I know there was a reason for that and I think it had to do with the fact that in the past, we've had to, we have noticed, we have a lot of trees in the back. And we want to continue to get rid of them. The trucks coming get rid of the trees unfortunately, we're not able to get through here last time around because, because of the septic. So they needed to come this way. So, I mean, I'm just, just wondering if, 15, 15 feet, okay.
I've never seen a truck that's 15 feet.
All right, no problem.
Unless it's a Hummer.
Can't be more than nine feet, get on the road.
Okay, do we have other questions? It would be good if we could have one conversation. Do we have other questions?
Yeah, the question is how come they didn't think of this?
And I think the rationale was because we want to make sure we have ample space for trucks that needed to get through in case we want, and we want to continue cutting some of those trees because some of these winds have actually just created recently a big mess in the backyard. Some are pretty close to the house, so that's, that's part of the rationale.
Are there other questions? So then, do you have a motion to end this portion or?
I guess, I'm not sure. If we said to, to the applicant, could you go back and rethink this? Do we, should we continue it or we, I don't know what we do, procedurally what we do at this point?
Well, you have many choices. You can, you can, you can deny it without prejudice, which is the, sends its strongest message that you could. You could, you could continue it and keep the hearing open so that he would have a chance to reflect upon his options. You could deny it.
What?
Or you could deny it.
Oh, yeah.
Or you could approve it. You mean, you know, it's all within your, all within your judgment.
Can I just clarify? So, because if you keep it open and we think about it, we come back in a month.
You may want to visit the site, for example.
Right, correct. Vote on it then, say, then I approve. They could still come back to us and, because you don't know what we're going to do. They'll still come back to us and move the potential site.
I think that applications can be, can be modified while, while they're being, while they're being continued. That's why, that's why you hold a public hearing.
That's what I'm asking.
And if the applicant decided to go with the scenario you were discussing of moving 10 feet to the left and six feet back, then it's, we don't even need a?
No, then we're done.
Just for the application.
Right.
Then you go off and build. Because then you're within zoning and it's not an issue.
And what will we gain as a decision-making body by keeping it open? Think about that too, for one month. What more knowledge are you going to have? I mean, I've seen the property, I mean, I didn't walk it.
No, I didn't walk it. I don't know if it's denied, isn't it, aren't they prevented from coming back for some period of time?
There's a, there's a state statute that we've never really been very strict with, that, that, that you don't have to consider an identical application for a year. Now, what's an identical application? We don't, you know, we don't really know what that is. But, you know, we mostly approach these things in a, in a useful problem-solving aspect of things.
So what would be the most useful problem-solving scenario? Would be to continue? Or look at it and then revisit this in a month?
Well, I guess the question is, if we're continuing, it seems like for us to continue, we need to be thinking of, well, we need more information, right? Do we have enough information to make a decision right now? Do we have enough information to make a decision right now? If, if we don't, then it makes sense to continue, right? If we're sort of thinking about, well, you know, it's maybe the, um, appellant has heard our consideration and maybe will consider changing the design to a one-car design or moving the location or some other thing so that it's not in compliance, then I'm not sure what we do by continuing, and it would make more sense just to say, no, we don't, we don't see the hardship. Now, if we think there might be a hardship, um, and we want either him to present more information about the hardship, um, then I could say continuance.
Personally, I just think you have to be careful for hardship. What is the hardship? Because you think you're gonna come back with something about a hardship next month.
Right.
Puzzled that this house was built without a garage.
Yeah, I'm puzzled.
In this environment.
After the regulation.
After the regulation in the late 70s, that, that's very puzzling, but it, it doesn't meet the definition of hardship, unfortunately, at least as I understand it, so...
I'm not sure that, that in life, who would promise a garage?
Yeah. Maybe an ice scraper.
I don't have one myself, by the way, I say that ruefully, by the way.
When was your house built, though?
1836. I don't think there were automobiles.
There weren't any cars.
Horses, horses.
Predicts the future.
Barn.
So does anyone want to make any sort of motion?
I'm just sitting here. You guys, whatever.
And the definition of a same application could, it could be a matter of six inches, one foot, or...
Well, look what you've done in the past, in the recent past, where you've headed numerous garages.
Yes.
And that have needed some sort of relief.
Yes.
They've been mostly side yard reliefs, by the way. And, uh, and one of them changed size and moved a little bit to the left, right? The, um, by the way, it's been, that one's been constructed and works out great, everybody's happy.
And that one was, correct me if I'm not recalling it properly, they came in, requested a variance, we denied it, because it seemed like there was a better way of doing it, and then they came back with a different proposal, which still required a variance, but the variance was much less, and we approved it, is that my...
That, that's correct, and that was a second application with its attendant fees, by the way. So, another benefit of continuing it and, and, and having some sort of thoughtfulness upon the application is that you save some money and some time.
And to your point about thoughtfulness, if we continue, with all due respect, the thoughtfulness isn't just by this group, the thoughtfulness will also be by the...
That's why I turned around when I said the word thoughtful.
Okay, I didn't, I must have turned my head when you looked and turned your head.
Right, right.
So, so then approaching it that way, um, we could have a motion to the effect that the board does not currently see a sufficient hardship, and the appellant is invited to come back with a clearer view of the hardship or a revision?
It might be over, it might be overthinking the, the, just the motion to continue.
Just a motion to continue. That's, that's according to the applicant's rules of comment.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna necessarily step on the motion to approve either, by the way, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just a staff person, so...
Right, but that situation we were just discussing about that previous application was a non-conforming, uh, existing property, if I recall.
Well, one of them was not, one of them was built in the same era as this house, had a lot of wetlands, had a septic system nearby. We've had a couple of garages that, but it was all side yards.
Right, not double front.
Now, I don't know what you care to think about is a, is a, two front yards as a, as a hardship.
But then, then the remedy isn't here, the remedy is zoning, to consider, in other words, if we said, well, yeah, but, but a lot of towns only do one, if they have two, they only consider one. But Woodbury considers both, so if the issue is, we should only consider one, then that's really, the remedy for that is zoning, not the zoning board of appeals.
No, but it's a, it is a lot of water to haul, to, uh, to get a garage by proposing to change the zoning regulations.
I'm just saying that this isn't the right place to make, for that remedy, that's my report.
If we're always approving applications because of other front yards.
Well, no, right, that's all I'm saying. So, I, I, I will move that we continue. Any seconds, Heather?
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Not that I'm showing my cards, but I would suggest that we think about, um, think about the fact that it is a variance, and, um, if there are other options to be presented.
Well, the, the applicant can always do that by meeting zoning requirements and withdraw, and then our discussion's over, so that's completely there. If we come back in a month and it's still up for discussion, I mean, I would, personally, I would go walk the property and go look. But I don't think rehearsing to continue, and you have a second, so...
Further discussion? Hold the vote. All in favor of continuing? So, it appears unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you, so what are the next steps?
The next step, well, two things, we, some of us may want to go walk the property with you, so that's, that's for us to do. And then the other thing is for you to do, is to consider some of the...
What you have proposed?
Slight changes that you could do, that don't require the zoning board of appeals, because they meet zoning. If you meet zoning, then we're out of it, and you're...
You can just build.
You can just go visit with Terry and start building.
Perfect, okay.
So if you withdraw your application because you found that you could move it and meet zoning, then done.
Okay.
On the other hand, if you say, no, it's gotta be where it's gotta be, and then we've had a chance to go look, we may, some of us may agree with you, and others may say, yeah, I don't think so. I mean, that's, you know, that's part of the process.
And I'd also encourage you, and you may want to just, you know, have further discussions with Terry about what constitutes a hardship. And, you know, so that when we talk about, well, you know, it's, is, you know, in terms of bushes, trees, septic systems, when does something become a hardship?
Well, my, my understanding was that it had to do with the current setup of where the septic tank was versus the refusal, the leasing fee, and that may have not, not been it, so, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure to do, do your job, Terry. All right.
Okay.
So I, I guess in the event that I don't withdraw, then we'll just move, continue to move forward on, on this. Right, you guys hear from...
Just at the next meeting, yeah.
Perfect.
You do this?
Yeah. January.
All right. Thank you.
So, next on the agenda is approval of minutes of our September meeting.
Where is the little meeting? Do we have to come back and schedule?
Yeah.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Yeah, I'm looking to approve the, the minutes of the, is that September 11th meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor?
I'm standing, listening.
And then, next on the agenda is correspondence, and do you want to speak to that, Terry?
We've had one piece of correspondence, and it's in the packages, and that's your genetic foundation of planning and zoning, this quarterly, this... Always useful.
Which personal desires for a larger home, not a valid hardship? Right, in a sense.
I've read that before.
In a sense, I, I mean, I find it very useful, obviously.
I want, I want a, I want a bigger garage, I want more garages.
Okay, is there any other business to bring before the board?
Do we have a meeting minutes, do we have, excuse me, uh, uh, meeting dates? Is there a calendar? Maybe we did that last time.
I don't see it in the...
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, we might have done it right.
Let me, let me propose one other bit of business that came up, was, um, when I was speaking with whoever at the office, he asked, so who's a co-chair if you can't make it? For the vice chair, or co-chair, or what have you? And especially since there was very bad traffic on the Parkway today, it wasn't clear that I was going to make it. Should we have somebody appointed vice chair? Do you have any nominations for vice chair?
Do I be vice chair?
I want to be, but I will be.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll accept your nomination.
All right, so I, I, I...
Jeff, that way.
You second?
Second. Okay.
All in favor?
So you both have to be here.
That's right.
No, he's vice chair, so...
One or the other, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good idea.
Okay.
You sure?
Well, I'm not doing this, though.
What's Hank's title, Admiral? Does he get a thing?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.